...this meeting in order, I would like to remind you to please check your cell phones, make sure that they're off. I'd like to follow up with Councilman Taylor for any indication.
Mr. President, Father, we do thank you for this beautiful day you gave us. Thank you for the rain. Protect us tonight from any storms that may come about. We know that you're in charge. Thank you for allowing us to live in a great town like Tarboro. Thank you for the citizens that are showing their willing to participate and work with the council. Thank you again for each home that's representing and blessing each home. Be with this council and help us to work in one accord for the betterment of our camp. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Please stand for the question, ladies.
Our pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we get into our request and petitions of citizens, I've been asked for a letter from someone who is unable to be here. I'm going to start it off with this letter. Tarboro Police Department Captain Webb, Lieutenant West. During these unprecedented times of crisis, it is so important that the community unite together. You demonstrated such an act on June 25th as the Etchum County Food Mobile, as we partner with Interfaith Food Shuttle in Raleigh. We all merged together to serve our community. No way would it have been successful as it was had it not been for your department. On behalf of that community of support, we thank you collectively and individually for your tireless support. In addition, during this COVID-19 pandemic crisis, we still look for community support and continue to reach out as we attempt to offer this needed service to Etchum County. We will by the month, as the conditions seem, safely sponsor another food mobile on July 23rd. We know that you have other obligations or appreciate any support or any reference to other agencies who could reach out for service. We have offered this service for two years and have watched the relentless effort of people in the community reach out to make a blessing. We have also seen the faithfulness of our God to show favor and substance for the Interfaith Food Shuttle Ministries. We also shout out to the Tarboro Public Works for the great support in hauling waste and recycling boxes. A special thank you for their office assistant, Lita Kohler, who is an excellent binder of community connection. Thank you so much. Again, thank you for your support and help in our community. Submitted Shirley Hill Pastor Gloria Tabanapple to Faith Talk. I thought I'd start off with a thank you, but I think the rest of them might be a little different. Monica Fleming.
This is my approval of the matter to...
Oh, excuse me, did I skip that? Sorry about that. Approval of the agenda by council on the table of motion. Second. Third. All those who favor the motion signify as to deny. Those opposed, the agenda is approved. Request and petitions of citizens, please.
Mayor Pitt, council members, and area citizens. I come to you tonight as a resident of this historic town of Tarboro and as a historian. Some have proposed that the Civil War monument on the town common be removed. I am glad that we are having a public meeting, a civil discussion rather than violence and destruction that has visited so many other communities. The town common was designated as an original part of the town when it was chartered in 1760. It is one of the oldest community parks in the country. The only structures to be put on the common were those for the good of the people. And back in the 1800s, there were schools on the common. In 1970, the town common by itself was put on the National Register of Historic Places, separate then the Historic District of Tarboro, which came later. Today, the common has ten structures, monuments, benches, plaques, that have been placed on it during the past of over 100 years to educate our citizens. Several monuments represent the involvement of Etchum and Tarboro citizens in historic events. The Wilson Monument recalls the Mexican-American War in the 1840s. The Confederate Monument recalls the Civil War, which divided this country and resulted in the end of slavery at a cost of over 700,000 lives. There is also a monument to the Spanish-American War. And of course, the Veterans Monument that represents the 20th century service of our veterans. As a historian, I don't want to see the removal of any statues or monuments. While the removal may satisfy some people now today, it is a disservice to the future because once it is gone, the history is gone and no one can learn about it. So if the monument is gone 20 years from now, nobody will be talking about what it meant. If you approve the removal, then some people will be satisfied now, but others are going to be angry because that monument has stood for over 100 years. If you leave it, then some people who want it removed will be angry and others will be satisfied. Some may see this as a no-win situation, but I see an alternative. None of us were here 160 years ago when the war was fought. None of us were here when the monuments were put up over 100 years ago. It is not right to change history because we don't like what was done. I don't like the building we're in. I think it is a poor replacement for the original Town Hall, City Hall. But I can't change that. I cannot change history. Taking down that monument is not going to change what has happened. Rather than the town spending over $100,000 to destroy something that is a part of the history of the town, I suggest we spend a reasonable amount to educate everyone and use the funds for positive growth. The Civil War statue is a generic enlisted soldier. It is not representative of a specific officer or an individual. I propose we add signs to the monument, one to tell when it was put up and why, to remember those who fought in the war, and another to talk about the others who fought in the war. North Carolina had over 8,000 men to serve in the Union Army. Over 50 of them came from Etchum County and Tarboro. These were members of the United States Color Troops, and I have the list of those people here and I have the military records. Okay? At least a dozen of those were wounded or died. Let us recognize those men who fought for this community and freedom together on that monument. Let Tarboro show other towns that destruction is not the answer. Instead, let us educate and continue our rich historical heritage that we can recognize all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Louis Ridgeway.
Mayor, Councilman, there are times when it's great to go second. This is one of those.
Name and address.
Name is Louis Ridgeway. Address is 1009 St. Andrews Street. Longtime resident of Tarboro, left after high school, came back 43 years. This is home. To segue from what she is saying, I came here today because I knew the monument was going to be on the agenda, but when I saw it was on in action item, I went, this is moving pretty fast. And because this is such a significant issue with the town and its citizens, I think we need to slow it down a little bit. If we're voting today, I wish you the best of luck. I think we need to do more due diligence. We need to get more in touch with our citizens, our representatives, to find the true meaning of what this means to the town people of Tarboro. I think you like that we, between us, we may have populated 25% of our population of 12,000 people. There are a lot of other people in our town that should have a voice in what we're doing to our town. So I think instead of going at the speed of light, let's slow it down a little bit. Let's vote to continue to research, what she said, to do our research, to conduct a better form of decision before we make a decision. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Bill.
I'm a bit hard to follow. My name is Bill Arm, live in Trail Park, Alabama, near Tarboro. Been here for seven, four years. Hope to be here for 25, 30 more. I just want to say that my defender for 160 years never bothered nobody. We don't need a mockery. They didn't stand where it's been for 160 years. Just because a few folks gone, I mean, everybody does. And I say there's vote on it, not just in here, but the whole town. If anything's done to it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Eddie Taylor.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just got it back from Bill. I think we're going to decide something here later on in the head of...
Your address.
611 South 57. Tarboro.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to put it on the ballot and vote on it in November. We can't make some kind of rational decision here. I agree with Louis. Don't do anything lying. Give us some time. That's it. If we do, we'll put it on the ballot and vote on it. It's taxpayer money, it's going to be pulled in there. I'll be taxpayer, I'll be voting. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Your end.
Well, I apologize in advance because I am not a public speaker, and if I get through all of this without passing out, don't worry about it. Mary Ann Campagni, 1812 Leitron, I'd be prepared. Many of you know me, I've been in business in this town for over 40 years. I have sold hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of houses to people from all over the country. To date, do you know how many people have objected to the town council, I mean, to the town having those statues and monuments on it? Zero. They come to this community, they come to this community because of the wonderful lower crime rate, the community, historical reasons, whatever. But that being said, I want to also point out that when all of this came up, I have gone to the people. I have not talked to any white people, I have talked to only black people. I have gone to the post office, I have gone down the street, I have talked to the different people in grocery stores all over town. Viola Harris was also contacted, not by me personally, but her response is, this is ridiculous, we should not do it. Now she's somebody that's here. Also, I feel that, and I have the response from all of those individuals, when I asked them, what is your position about the town council and does anything on that common? I keep saying council, pardon me, commons. Is there anything on that town common that offends you in any way whatsoever? And do you know how many people said what their response was? Zero. Now I have been doing this for days, and I didn't ask for names, I didn't tell them anything, and I only approached black people. Do you know what one lady did? She was a business lady, and she says, well, I'm not going to tell you what I feel because she felt there might be retribution. Now that's really sorry. In a community that has been so cohesive for so many years, all these individuals have to do is just look at what is available for the black people in this town. Not only the black people, but the white people. We have retirement places, we have low-income housing, we have affordable housing, we have fair housing. I have sold houses to people from Maryland, Washington DC, New York, and all over the country, and they come here and they love the community. And what are we going to do for our economic repercussions in the future? We market this town as a historical town. We've spent lots of money doing this, we've got big billboards up on the highway. Are we going to take all those down if this passes? My question to you is, when are we going to focus on the good and not on the bad? We've got a post office that was just renamed within the last several years for a black gentleman. He was instrumental, you know, I'm not going to mention names, I'm not going to, you know, do that. But this is a town that has always moved forward, not through destruction, but by working together. And that's what I'm suggesting. Don't let a few people come in and jump on a bandwagon when they're not from here, they're not from here. The people I asked are all individuals that have lived in this area. And if you doubt that I've been in the grocery stores, Joe, go ahead and talk to Sylvia Nash because she saw me today when I was in the food line. So if you want proof of this, that's the only proof I've got, because I do not have people's names, I didn't want them, I didn't want to put anybody on the spot, and that's exactly how I feel. But let's focus on the positive links in this city, okay? We can take this money that's going to be spent and put something good on it, you know, put it to good use. They want something, this is, like I said, I just mentioned the post office. They went through normal channels. Nobody gave them any opposition. It's something that Tarboro has embraced, and we've been very, very, very fortunate to have some very good leaders. And I sure hope we're not going down the wrong path this time. Because I'm afraid of what happens in the future, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Basil.
If I could ask you guys, make sure you speak into the mic, we're here on a Zoom meeting bit.
Okay. My name is Rick Basil, 1410 Captain's Road. And I sent an email to you all. I'm a transplant New Yorker, I've been here nine years. I moved to this town, I lived in this area because of its historic designation, the beautiful commons, just the history of the area. Taking down those statues is not going to remove the scars of the Civil War and of slavery. Not going to happen. What I would like to see, instead of tearing something down and inviting people, put up a monument in the commons celebrating the things that black Americans have done for this country. Harriet Tubman, Frederick Douglass, Dr. Martin Luther King. How about the Black inventors? I did a class project that I was doing for my students, and I looked up Black inventors. I'd like to have a nickel for every time each one of you, myself included, got on an elevator, got smacked by the door, and had the door go back. That safety door was invented by a black man. He saved him from getting crushed several times in my lifetime. Bloodbath, closer to TV, peanut farm. And one thing adds to the other. Celebrate those people, they're a big part of our history, and they're the people that should be celebrated. Spend the money on that, not tearing down our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Martin Fleming.
Martin Fleming, and I'm at 812 St. Andrews Street. Mr. Bodica Fleming. If this was a 12-step meeting, I would say, I am Martin and I'm a recovering Yankee. And yet, in spite of that, I agree that the CSA statue should stay. It reminds us of a history that was unpleasant, hateful, sinful, racist, and not something that deserves recognition today, yet is part of our history and we should remember. If moved, if we could thump our chests and boast about how righteous and how non-racist we are, and we'd feel good about ourselves. That feeling and any history learned would last a year or two. Then five years down the line, it would be forgotten. If this is moved or removed, will our racist past disappear? Will racist attitudes just fade away into the present? No, it will not. Instead, I recommend that we add signage with information that increases one's knowledge of history. I worked as a park ranger for eight years, National Park Service, and we had a lot of historic markers there, and they're used as reminders of some bad things, some good. If they're gone, then the public blinks their eyes and they forget the history. Compton Confederate soldiers, such as 19-year-old Henry Wyatt, made sacrifices to support their community when they went. His sacrifice was quite early and quite fatal. The majority of these soldiers had no little choice. Some were drafted, some were cajoled, some were recruited, and they had been taught since birth that the structure of their society was how it should be, so that they went off without thinking about that. The cause of the war was not right, but the reasons the Compton soldier joined were varied. Thus, it is wise and prudent to use the time, energies, and expenses to add to historic information. Make it clear that we honor the Compton Confederate soldiers and the men from our area who joined the Union Army with objective historical information. That's what I strongly recommend.
Thank you. Karen Andrews.
Good evening, I'm Karen Andrews, 1008 North Main Street. First, I want to thank each of you for your many hours and hard work managing this wonderful town. Having returned to Tarboro in 1989, after spending 27 years away, I was pleasantly surprised that this community still valued its historic homes, churches, businesses, and of course, the town common. This beautiful common is a draw to people to stroll, walk dogs, take family photographs, get married, and hold community events, such as the happening on the common and the North Carolina Symphony. Beautiful historic statues and structures have graced the grounds for over 100 years, and I have never heard a discouraging word about their presence. They serve to teach us about our history, reminding us of a time that has taught us many important lessons. To disassemble the statue, statues does nothing for those who want their removal, except to show that bullies can win when fear and violence are used. I pray that this council will stand its ground and not let Tarboro get swept up in the fear that is sweeping our nation. Tarboro is full of wonderful, peaceful, loving individuals who do not see the color of a person's skin as an indication of their ability, capacity to learn and succeed, and their capability to give and receive love. Please keep these reminders of our past so we do not repeat it. Thank you.
Thank you. Morris Bates.
I'm here in support of the motion placed by...
Name and address.
Morris, I am here to be at Wilson Street, Tarboro.
That's it. Thank you.
As I can continue?
Yes.
Oh, please. I'm here in support of the motion placed by Councilman O'Leary to...
There's no motion for the board yet.
Not yet, but when the motion is placed, I'm in support of it. I have very dear reasons, and I know it. My reasons are in contradiction to other people's beliefs, we all want that. It's a history to a lot of people, it's a part of history to a lot, it's a unique history. And I think about me, I don't mean to cross anybody with my beliefs. I think every man has rights and beliefs. But I think in a society where we have to live together, every man's opinions matter. And so I stand on my opinion, and I think that statue should be reviewed. I stand as proud of someone who can put it where they want it so that they can share the way they may share with it. But I prefer it not to be in the public. I hope to stand and speak towards that again, I'll stand the same. So I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes.
Jay Vick.
96, 42, Inty Highway 97 is my address. Mr. Mayor, council members, first of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to spend a little time here with you. I was born and raised in this town. 59 years old. I've left and come back. I always called this town my home, I still call this town my home, I will always call this town my home. I'm not here to try to convince you or tell you what I think you should do, or whether I think the town, the common should remain untouched, or the Confederate monuments and memorials should remain in place, but I don't. I'm here instead to ask you to do your job. Be leaders. Represent the citizens of the town of Tarboro. You know, with everything going on in the world today, we don't have to follow everybody like a hog with a ring through his nose walking down a path. Just because they're doing it in Washington DC, Raleigh, North Carolina, Seattle, Philadelphia, wherever, we don't have to do it that way. This is Tarboro. We can do it the way Tarboro wants to do it, and the way Tarboro needs to do it. This has to stop. And for it to stop, it's got to start stopping somewhere. Why not start in Tarboro? Make Tarboro famous. Let the national news, right after your decision, get on the, get on airwaves and say, there's this small, sleepy, southern, historic town that loves all its citizens. Black, white, green, purple, it doesn't matter what their skin color is. They love them all. They help them all. They take care of them all. But they've decided that they're going to respectfully say no to erasing the history that this town is based on. Good things, bad things, right things, wrong things went on. We're not going to get rid of them, we're going to remember them, we're going to learn from them, and we're going to make this place even better than it is now. If we don't stop it now, when are we going to stop it? The cotton press. I'm sure if we look back on history, it's pressed cotton that was brought to town by a farmer that owned slaves. Cotton that was picked by slaves. Horrible, unbelievable practice. Should never have happened. But it did. This cotton press has got to go, it's got to go. It reflects the exact same thing the fountain and the memorial do. How about the George Washington sign? We're so proud of it, as we should be. Our first president spent a night in this town, not a whole lot of small, southern towns can say that. We did, we can. We're proud of it. We put a sign up to let people know that he was here. Signs got to go. He owned slaves. He was the president of the United States when slavery was going on. Again, a horrible act that should not have happened. But if you're going to get rid of part of it, when are you going to stop? When are you going to draw the line? When is enough enough? How far do you go? So I stand here, and I'm going to ask you, please be leaders. Please stand up for the town of Tarboro. Lead the common as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay Cutler.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, my name is Jay Cutler. I live at 1008 Palmer Street, Tarboro. I graduated from Tarboro in 1982, and at that time, it was about half-black and half-white, and we all got along. There were skirmishes, there were disagreements, but it wasn't about color and it wasn't about race. I left Tarboro in 1982 and I graduated, and I just moved back a year ago. I've been gone since 1982. My entire adult life, I yearned to get back home and be around my family and my friends. One of the things about Tarboro that some of the other people have said is, I love the history. Growing up in Calvary Church, that church is very, has a lot of meaning to me. And I know there are people that are offended by the monuments in the common, and I can't relate to that, nor can I pretend to relate to that. But like other people have said tonight at this podium, is, I think to erase our history and pretend that things did not occur are not serving our youth and our future leaders justice. And I can't tell you the feeling that I get when I pull back in Tarboro and I see these state trees and these beautiful homes and the beautiful people. state trees and these beautiful homes and the beautiful people, and that's really what drove me back. And I'm glad to be here. I'm proud to say I'm from Tarver. I've always been proud to say I was from Tarver. And I would like for us to honor our history and recognize that it is just that in the past, and for us to get along and work well together and have a really bright future. Thank you.
Thank you. Will you park?
First of all, I thank you, Town Tarver, the mayor and the council member for allowing me this privilege. Do you have a brief?
Name and address?
William M. Parker, thirty-eight twenty-six, Virginia Church Road, Tarver, N.C. Two seven eighty-six. May I begin? Real briefly, I want to just share a little bit of my views as it relates to the Confederate statue that stands on public property here in the town of Tarver. I have heard many views as to why. I respect all those views. But within the sense that I would also have all of us understand the reason why I would oppose being there as long as I've been there, and it's time now that there ever been a time that we act as we go forward. It may be done in memory of those who died in a war, in a war that was, a war that really was fought, and I believe oppressed a portion of this population of this nation. At that time, though, those people were not considered part of this nation. We were slaves. Nobody had done anything in the memory of what we did and struggled with it. During the eighteen hundreds, over six point seven million slaves evolved in this nation. Nobody had built monuments locally to celebrate the life of what they did here in this county, not alone this nation. And before the eighteen hundred, the war, Civil War, eighteen fifty-nine, Harvard Tharvey, remember John Brown, rose up against what he called injustice, inhumane treatment of the African-American that they brought, the slaves. Nobody put a thing in the memory of what he did. That's part of history. Nat Turner, eighteen thirty-one, rose up, tried to liberate black folks, and doing so to kill white people. Nobody put a statue up to remember him, and he's part of history, and he was a liberator. And so eighteen sixty-one, we find there was a time that many in this nation, again, recognized that injustice was done to our people. Nobody puts a thing in the memory of them locally. Taxpayer dollars, African-American community support, the remembrance of Confederacy. Confederacy was white supremacy. You called anything you want to. Go back and look at history. We can't change it, but going forward, we can make things better. The future's coming, whether we're ready or not. If what happened had not happened when it happened, what is happening right now would not be happening. Injustice, let's call it what it is. You can't change history, but we can going forward. We can make it better. I can't even remember the bad part of history. I want to remember the good things of history. Yes, we need to reexamine where we are and why we're here. Why were you even here talking about this? If what happened had not happened when it happened, the injustice to our people, we wouldn't even be here. Think about that. So why perpetuate that and remind me and those who come behind me and those like me when we walk by those statues, not only in this town, but all over this nation? And they weren't just put up after the war in the memory of this stinking fall. They were put up in the eighteen fifties and when segregation and Jim Crow laws were enacted to intimidate people. That's why they were put up. And let's call, call a spade a spade. And so I'm saying now, we not intimidating anybody. Nobody's afraid now. If we're going to live together, as Dr. King said, "As brothers or as parents, we're going to perish together," it's true. Let's not continue to perpetuate that, which is false, which is insulting folks. If anybody at all can say anything Jesus would say, "If anything offends at least of these, it offends me." Anything that you do offends your brother, consider that. And we must learn to get to live together as brothers and sisters. The past is gone, let's bury the past. Want to remember the dead, cemetery for you. Remember that, put your monuments in the cemetery, headstone, that's what the dead is. And my dead folks in the cemetery, headstone, remember them there. And my family history, put it on my private locker, you want to, in my backyard front. That's for me. But I need to talk out in the public to everybody what I believe in when it hurt other people the way it has hurt African-Americans in this nation. So going forward, let us do something to do it right. Do what's right at all times. Do what's right at all times, and I'll leave on this note. Apostle Paul advocates strongly to us the importance of going forward to the high, to the hard calling, to the pride, to the high calling. But Peter said more in First Peter, chapter four. He said, "Suffer for righteousness." Jesus suffered for righteousness. And he said to us, going forward, to those who live and not the dead, "Let us suffer, and let us do it for Christ's sake in our suffering." Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Harris.
My name is Tony Harris. I live at six oh nine St. Davis Street. And before I gave my comments, I couldn't hear everything outside, so somebody sent me a message that said, a lady said that I said to her, or in front of her, that it was ridiculous to remove the statue. So I wanted to look that woman in the eye and see who that was.
That was me. And I said that I was told that. I didn't say that he spoke to me that way.
I knew it told you that, if you can't believe, you can't believe everything here. What I said was, I had lived in Tarver probably about thirty years. I was not raised here, so I don't have all the history of people who were born and raised in Tarver. What I said was, because I live right across the street from the commons, that it had never made me any difference because I knew who I was and whose I was. But as an elected official, I serve a very diverse district, blacks, whites, Latinos. One-fourth of those that I serve are in the town of Tarver. What I said and believe is that people should have the opportunity to help you decide what needs to be done with that monument. There are eight wards in Tarver. If that statue belongs to the city of Tarver, everybody in all eight wards should have the opportunity to tell you what they think should be done, to have a democratic decision to be made. You can't go on with part of my district says or part of the other district. We all have our ideas. We all have our concerns. I believe I heard one gentleman who said, "Put it on the ballot. I also do a survey. All of you should know your people in your wards, but don't make it one person's decision to say, 'This is what we ought to do.'" Because everybody in Tarver pays taxes, I'm continuing to remember, so everybody should have an opportunity to decide what should be done with that statue.
Thank you. Doris Steff.
Can you hear me with my mask on? My name is Doris Steff. I live at eighteen sixteen, Lakeview, Tarver. I am here to also speak on the status of the statue. I interview young people in our community, and I interview senior citizens. And the consensus for both groups was, it needs to come down because we're at a point in our democracy where when we know better, we need to do better. So I'm here to speak on their behalf that in making your decision, you have this worthy opinion, and we have elected you to keep unfolding this instrument of our democracy. We have the United States Constitution. We have the state charter. We have the city and the county charters. All of those instruments speak to us creating a society of the people, by the people, and for the people. When we know better, we do better. And with that in mind, as young people told me and as my elders, it's time to make the correction and to take it down. Thank you.
Thank you. J.O. Williams.
Good evening. I am J.O. Williams, resident of Tarver now for twenty-two years. I'm here tonight because of, I just wanted to make my words, how my feelings clear about toppling statues. I'm not sure that the topple or move statues is going to change a lot of things. I've been in this world now for eighty-seven years, and I've seen a lot of wrong done. I've had a lot of hatred cast my way. I grew up in a county where there was no high school for African-American and no buses to ride. The only high school was nine miles away in Kiston, and I had to either thumb it or walk it. And I'm not sure what changed, what could change that because that's all history. I, my children were the first children to integrate school systems in Leno County. And I had men that I knew stop the school bus and give my children notes and tell me that I would be visited by the KKK, and they came, and burned across in my yard. And I reported that to the sheriff, and the sheriff, the man that talked with me, told me the only thing he knew to do was to set watch with my shotgun if somebody would come back and shoot. If I had done that, I would have been in deep trouble. But I've learned, I've accepted all of that, and I've learned to try to get along with the people that I live with. Nothing can change history. Nothing can change the fact that my great-great-grandfather was sold in Florida and brought to North Carolina. My name is Williams because the Williams brought me to North Carolina. And to change things in history is not our part. To topple a monument, I'm not sure it's going to help us. If we topple, we move all the monuments, destroy all of them, and people still had hatred in their heart, it would still be a rough world in which to live. I've learned to love and appreciate people. Last year alone, I went back to Leno County and preached. I preached several Sunday. I preached at a church where I could, it was almost a sin to look at when I walked past it, but I've been back and preached. And I heard this little old lady say one Sunday morning when I walked in, she said, "I know I'm going to get a hug today because J.O. Williams is here." She was probably one of those people who rode those buses who would throw things after us, at us as they rode by. We have to run to find a cornfield or tobacco barn someplace and hide behind a tree to duck objects. That, we can't change that. That happened. But I don't know if I have forgiven, but I've accepted that it did happen. The monuments are here, and they were precious to somebody. And I'm not sure that to take them down now and destroy all the monuments is going to help the situation in the world in which we live. I wanted to come and say that, and I have a lot of stories I could tell you of things that did happen. I told you the Glens didn't come. They came and broke out all the windows on one side of my house. My wife and I had left the house a few minutes ago to the store. We came back, and all the windows were out. And a couple mornings after that, we woke up in the morning, and across had been burned in the yard. I don't know who did it, but I accept the fact that it did happen, and that I've learned how to love my way through life. So I think what we need to do is to be able to accept that things did happen and try to live with the situation as we see it today. I don't know how much time I have. I just, I wanted to come here and say that. That's my feeling about it, and if anybody have any difference with that, that's okay. I try to be me. I've learned that, that I, if I can be right with me, then I can be right with other people. But that's the word that I wanted to share with us this evening, and I hope that will be meaningful to somebody, to tear down all of the statues, all of the monuments, not going to make any of you love me any better, or accept any of that. I've got to be me, and I have to live so that I, when I face you, you will know that you've looked at it in the face of a man. Thank you.
Thank you. Stoney Robertson.
My name is Stoney Robertson. I live at six oh three South Hyatt Circle. I moved to Tarver in nineteen ninety-three. I moved here because of my job. My first move here, I've come from Williamson, North Carolina, so it's kind of a small town like this. But when I got here, I saw how everything was put together, and everybody was keeping everything nice and up, and the downtown was thriving, and I thought, "These people got it figured out." I said, "This is great. This is wonderful." And then I got to looking at all the history around here, and I said, "This is even better." I said, "This is the kind of place I want to live." I work in Clayton, and I drive to Clayton every day because I want to live here. That's my choice. I've been asked, my wife has said, "Don't you want to move closer to work?" I said, "No, I love it here. I love the way things are done around here." My first question is, why did this come up about removing this thing? Who drove this, or what grew, or what happened? I mean, I don't get it. I know it's going on everywhere else, but why bring it here to this town when it's got so much to offer to everybody that wants to live here and everybody that wants to visit? I just, it's hard for me to understand. If I get a little emotional, I'm sorry. It's just the way I am. And how long has the monument been there? Does anybody know?
Nineteen oh nine. Nineteen eighty-two.
Sixteen years. And everybody's come out here, and they have their hat on the commons. I love it. I go to it every year. People go out there and sit up. I've never heard one person complain about anything at all in all their years, and I don't know how long that's been going on, but I know it's been going on a while. And here we are, trying to desecrate history. We're trying to erase it. And no matter what you do, you're not going to change it. What happened, happened, and we can't change that, but we can learn from it, and we can do better. That's the way history is. That's life. Life is the same way. If it works and it's good, then we do it again. If it didn't, and it was bad, then we don't repeat it again. That's my whole thing about this. I just, it's beyond me. When I heard about it, I was just like, you know, I heard about it going on everywhere else, and then I thought, "Well, it'll never happen here, not the way this town is." And who's to say that it's going to stop at that? If we don't stop it now, if we don't make a stand and say, "No, we're not going to do this." I mean, it could go down to the cotton press that's over here. They might want that taken down. How about the plantation homes that are here that's history? I mean, it could go on and on and on. There's just got to be a stopping point at some point where you got to say, "Enough's enough." You just got, you got to do that. You just got, you got to do that. And please don't be like these other politicians that we got hired representing us and won't do what the people want. I mean, the majority. I know everybody has got their different opinions. I understand that. And I respect that. I do respect that. I don't, anybody here think I don't respect that? I do respect that. The town of Tarboro motto is, "History is just the beginning." So we're going to change that too? Are we going to change that to, "The new history is just the beginning"? Is that the way we're going to see this? I mean, these are all questions that I have and I know a lot of other people. I wasn't even going to come because I got home late, but so many people were asking me to come and just, and in my heart, I wanted to. I really did. I'm not here to make any enemies. I'm just here as a person, a taxpayer, an American. And I just hate to see the history desecrated. I hate to see it took away like it was never there, like it never happened because it did happen. And I would just appreciate if y'all would kind of look at that and take that for what it's worth and do the right thing. Do the right thing. I hate to put it like this, but I'm going to say it. To me, this is my opinion, what's going on is like a growing cancer. And it just keeps growing and growing and growing and growing. If you don't try to stop it at some point, it's not going to stop. It's going to keep right on going. That's about what I got to say and I appreciate y'all letting me speak tonight. And like I say, I'm not here to make any enemies. I love everybody. I try to help everybody I can. I don't care what color, I don't care creed, color, race. It doesn't matter. People are people. We're all created in God's image. We're created by God. And that's, that's all I got to say. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Quincy Robinson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was listening while I sat outside. My name is Quincy W. Robinson. I reside at ten oh five Martin Luther King, Dune Drive, Tarboro, North Carolina, two seven eight six. I was listening outside and one of the first things that struck me was something that I wasn't aware of. And that was an attempt by anyone to do bullying, fear, and violence. I've not seen that and I've not heard that. Anyway, I don't know where that came from. And we should be thankful that we don't have to deal with that. I heard mention of the cotton game. Totally ridiculous, ridiculous argument. No logic based or fact-based whatsoever. Somebody talked about not being followers from other cities who are doing things that we supposedly reside in, cuckooing and not aware of. We are aware of our history and we're aware of what's going on today. And we want to discuss those things. And we want everybody to understand that those monuments that stand in the town commons represent something to everybody, but they don't represent the same thing to everybody. What they represent to me, I doubt that they represent the same thing to the majority of those who sit in this room here tonight. I don't have a lot of compliments and a lot of comments to make. I just want to say in response to another comment that was made earlier tonight and that, which seemed to signify that we are blindly following others who have done what we're attempting to do here tonight. We're not blindly following anybody. Everybody in this room, I assume is a resident of Tarboro. Everybody in this room has been some places other than Tarboro. So all that we know is not all that we are here. We are all that we've experienced. This is not the end. We're making history tonight. History didn't begin then. History's been made every single day and we have an opportunity to make history again. I love, I want to say that I love everybody. I don't have a single bone of hate or a single fiber of hate in my body, but I know that there are things in my life and there are things that are invisible to me that I have to see every day that represent hate. And those are the things that we're here to discuss and that we have discussed tonight. Not because we hate anybody, but we want to put that hate someplace else and we want to maintain to live like we have lived before peacefully, lovingly, working together in unison to build a better Tarboro. Let's not pretend that we exist as somebody, as I said earlier, alone. And I feel about ourselves, we're not. I simply ask that we all dig deep into our hearts and understand that what is history to some and what is heritage to others is a painful and a cruel history and heritage to others. And I ask you to take that into consideration when you make your decision, whatever you make your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherry Redditch.
My name is Sherry Redditch. I live at nine hundred Zanean Street. Firstly, we are all here due to the love we have for the town of Tarboro. I have resided here for almost sixty years, just a block away from the town common. Therefore, I grew up playing there later with my children and had played one day with my grandchildren. With this said, you can understand my passion on this subject. I'm asking the town council to consider postponing a vote on the removal of the Confederate Soldier Monument in the White Fountain until committee meetings within each ward be formed to explore options. We cannot erase history and that is what we would be doing if we removed these statues. Would we be pretending the Civil War never happened? Let us be a community that leads and works together with signage explaining who faulted, why they faulted, the loss experienced, and the importance of change. If they are removed, what is gained? If they are allowed to stay, hopefully all of us here tonight can commit to additional verbiage for our statue and fountain that the majority agrees will benefit our community. As the main page on the town of Tarboro states when you search for Tarboro, "Welcome to Tarboro. Our history is just the beginning." Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Ruffin.
My name is, I'm at one ten East Park Avenue. My name's Alyssa Ruffin. I've heard a lot of opinions about why people think they should come down, but have a lot of facts. It's acted as they were put in like almost near fifty years after they originally went up in Jim Crow era as an intimidation factor towards black people. That's just, just the facts. It's ridiculous that I haven't met any facts on this so far as of yet. And I think we should be listening to black people's opinions on it a little bit more and recognizing that these are rights and purposes, the monuments. A couple of days ago, someone put out flowers for the Soldier Monument that was put in like nineteen oh seven, nineteen oh three maybe. The fountain was put in nineteen ten. And that one, if you look at the actual quotes from when they put up the fountain, it is clearly racist. It said that they were right in fighting for the rights of owners' lives. It didn't say it in those exact words, but that was, that was the undertone. As someone who lives on the common, I think it's ridiculous that there's still other counties are actively taking them down and I can't imagine why we would keep them up any longer. It's, it's really, really upsetting, but I think they should come down. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dowell.
Good evening. How are you all? All right. My name is John Dowell. I guess here to talk about the monument just for a second.
Sure.
Six fifteen clock, right? Okay? I think I need to stay here. What are your councilman? Mr. Mayo. All right. I want to talk about the monument. Born and raised here in Tarboro all my life. Had a great time here, a great experience before going off to college. And I was privileged every day to walk up St. Patrick's Street and be able to walk through the commons head to Tarboro High at that time, okay? And I'm pretty much well aware of the statue, what it meant to this side and what it meant to that side. But what I want to say also felt, walking through that common, the pillage that occurred with that statue, the torment that occurred with that statue. Wanted to be a history major when I went off to college. I ended up changing that. So I was able to study what was going on quite a bit. And it brings a lot of hurt that that statue to people. And I thought about this in February. Actually, I took a picture of it in February. I don't know if it was on the docket and it was waiting to come at this time. But I was thinking about the economics of Edgewood with the new tile ceiling, with corners, with people coming into this area. Then I began to think even more as statues began to go down throughout the United States. And I was saying to myself, do we need to be in a position where people would be coming in a diverse population with these industries? And we're arguing over statues when we got governors, we got mirrors throughout the United States determining the best thing for their people is to bring this, bring these monuments down because they're looking at an economic point of view as well. They want to ensure that they bring in a diverse group of people and that they're not really ashamed by these monuments which tell a lie in a sense, okay? We won't be the first to tear it down, but I know we don't want to be the last in history to tear it down in North Carolina. Now, we were one of the last states to join the Union and I don't think we want to be last again in Tarboro, North Carolina and bringing down a monument. With the virus going on, jobs going on, I don't know if we want all of this confusion about a statue that most of America is taking them down and we're trying to defend, keep them one up. That is all I have to say.
Thank you. Mark President.
Mark Ruffin of one ten East Park Avenue. Obviously, we can't change history. History is what it is. But we can make change by removing monuments that people find offensive. If it's perceived offensive, it's offensive period, no discussion. And obviously, they can be moved to a museum or if people want to still know the history, that's fine. You know the history, but again, you can't change it. Something needs to be done and hopefully, hopefully all of you will make a stand, take a stand to make change so everyone can keep and the whole community. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a statement just now?
Hello, y'all. Can you hear me? My name is Marqueta Dickens. I just recently relocated back to Edgewood County. Most of you may know me when I left here at seventeen years old. I was a star player at Tarboro High School. I literally gave my blood, sweat, and tears for this town. Nine thirteen Pinola Street. I literally gave my blood, sweat, and tears for this town. I represented this town through the state of North Carolina, where I also went on to be a four-year starter at North Carolina State. I'm hall of fame at Tarboro High School. I went on to get my masters in education. I have a degree in counseling as well. And so, and one of the other things that I also have a keen interest in and studying is African-American history and anthropology. And so, as I sit here and I hear people talk about history and not erasing it, we all know that you can't erase the history. It doesn't matter if it's in a monument, in a book, wherever. What we need to be more conscious about is the history that we tell and how we tell it. And the things that I found troubling sitting here as a young person today, and I'm so happy that the young lady came and spoke up, is that if you listen, you will hear and see a great divide in the opinions, be it black or white, in terms of generations as well. And so, when you're talking about, as this young gentleman stated before, you talk about economic development and you talk about, let's talk about Edgewood County being the number one most distressed, distressed county in the state of North Carolina. Number one, on a scale of ranking all the way to four hundred points, Edgewood County is at fourteen. So when we're thinking about bringing new people and ideas into this town, I totally agree. You have to be thinking about the future. You can't just be thinking about the history. And so, if the, if the history of Tarboro is just the beginning, then we should not be hung up on monuments that are obviously racist. And so, as the young lady also spoke, we were talking about the history of Confederate monuments. I think that everyone here is written a place in history that the internet is free and you all should be holding yourselves accountable for learning your history, the true history. It's not about lost cause. It's far beyond that. And these monuments, and for me, representing Tarboro all these years and really born across and enraged right over here in Princeville, my dream has always been to connect the two towns and to bridge the gap. But I can guarantee you that it's going to be harsh to bridge a gap. And for me, learning what that monument meant, I hardly ever go back to the town commons. I do not feel welcome there, to be perfectly honest with you. And that's because I do understand history and I understand it thoroughly. I understand that all of these monuments came up after Reconstruction to be intimidating to black people to basically say, "Stay in your place and know your place." And it still feels the same way to me and I'm from here. And again, blood, sweat, and tears, prideful, love this town. But I also see and I recognize that you all don't see color per se, and that's not the right turn to do or the right thing to do. I need you to see me. I need you to see me in my totality. I need you to see me in my wholeness, my black heritage. And Edgewood County in itself has made me into the person that I am today. And even growing up in high school, I'm sorry that everybody thinks that this town is so lovely, that it's not about race, that everybody gets along and everybody's just, you know, get along and they don't see color. That's absolutely not true. It's not true. And as the young lady alluded to earlier, I think you really, if you love someone, then you should really take upon their perspectives. And it has been at least two times when I can account in this year alone that I have been police profiled in this town simply because of what I look like. And the first time was in high school, as I put on for this city with my heart on my sleeve, and that broke me. Sixteen years old, leaving out of East Tarboro, where my family resides. I asked, "Why am I being poured over? Why are you following me?" Well, I was told basically to tag people or run tasks. This Negro in the... Well, I was told, basically, to tag people or run tasks, because this Negro in the state of North Carolina, to randomly run tags, and it still is, because I got the same explanation Thanksgiving when I came on to visit. So this town is not the image that I keep hearing today. And it's frustrating to hear as a person who just moved back here, because a lot hasn't changed. And I agree, monuments coming down will not change hearts, but they make a stand. They mean something when they come down. It means that the leaders of this town, if we're talking about percentages, if you look around, this does not represent a percentage of Edgcombe County or Tarboro. So we have a lot more people that we need to hear, and if we, and one of the reasons that I'm excited to be back is because I do want more young people to be engaged politically, and we have to be, because we're the future. And I think that our young people are in a place where we speak about it here today, that we get along and so on and so forth, but I have found so many people stepping up and speaking up that don't look like me. And in this town, it's going to take more of that. So I'm asking you as leaders to consider not just the now, but the future of Tarboro and what it will look like, and who are you representing, and who are you bringing, and who are you recruiting in terms of diversity to this town? Because what I'm hearing right now is, is, is a facet, it's a dream, but it's not the reality of the majority of the citizens. And so just like this, um, this, this little woman has spoken earlier about cabbages in the community, I too have done my fair share of cabbages in the community. What I find mostly is that ignorance is bliss. Most people don't even have idea that it's there. But for those of us who do, it's a real stain. And when you talk about history, I love history. I have walked the Civil, the Civil War tour. I have been in the, the cemeteries where the Confederate soldiers are buried. I have actually done my ancestry and found a plantation where my family was right here in Edgcombe County. So history won't be erased by removing monuments. History will always be there and will always be remembered, but it does not have to be an intimidating factor. The history of Edgcombe County does not have to be remembered through a racist monument. Honoring Confederate soldiers, do what you will. To me personally, it was treason, and that's just what it was. So if you want to honor people, there are great places. There are literally on the Civil War trail, there's Confederate soldiers already buried there, there's a beautiful place in even terms of a status where it would be, where people could still venture in terms of education and still get the history where they can learn those things and be better and become better. So I just ask that you consider these words, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hit? Okay, moving on, we're going to go to the county manager's recommendations.
Okay, I would ask council to approve the consent items in the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made in second. Discussion. All those in favor, so you can find a standing eye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion is carried.
Okay, as far as action items, the first item on the agenda of course was a request to have a discussion, not necessarily take action, but have a discussion concerning the Confederate monuments. So I'd ask the council to be entered into that discussion at this time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a historic moment in our town, our state, and our country. We are in nation in conflict once again over race relations. But whether it's conflict, there's opportunity for change, clarity, growth, and greater understanding of ourselves and others. It is my hope that we can rise above our respective biases so that we can see each other's common humanity without judging and condemning each other, and come to a solution that is unifying and healing and respectful. First, there is a pledge that I think unites all of us, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance. It starts with, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. This is the one flag that unites us all. And this is the only national flag that I believe belongs on public grounds. And to the republic for which it stands, there's only one republic that unites all of us, the United States of America. One nation under God, while we may have different religious beliefs and affiliations, we are still united by the belief of one God. Indivisible, which means we stand together as one nation, a house divided against yourself in our strength. And finally, with liberty and justice for all, which means that we pledge to respect each other's right to be free and to be treated fairly under the law. We find ourselves in a situation where honoring one group's history on public grounds brings pain and suffering to another group. To one group, the Confederate monuments represent honoring the history of the Confederacy and its soldiers. And they believe that any attempt to remove these monuments from public places is an attempt to deny their history, suffering, and sacrifice. To another group, to which I belong, Confederate monuments represent the Confederacy's effort to preserve the enslavement of our ancestors. And we believe that keeping these monuments in public places is a constant reminder of the pain and suffering that our ancestors endured during slavery and subsequent years as victims of brutal oppression. General Robert E. Lee died in eighteen seventy, just five years after the Civil War ended. But while he was alive, he stressed his belief that the country should move past the war. He swore his allegiance to the Union and publicly cried sudden severagism, whether military or symbiotic. In fact, he opposed monuments, specifically Confederate war monuments. Lee, a Westport graduate, was influenced by his knowledge of history. He believed that countries, countries that erased visible signs of civil war recovered from conflicts quicker. He was worried that by keeping these settlements alive, it would keep the division alive. And of course, we can see this today. Note, he specifically referred to Confederate monument, war monuments, and visible signs of civil war. That is why I am totally against removing the fountain from the town commons, as some have suggested, because it does not meet these criteria. Robert E. Lee the fourth referred to the statue of his ancestor, General Robert E. Lee, located in Richmond, Virginia, Wrights. The statue is a hollow mountain of a painful ideology and actual oppression against black people. Taking it down would provide new opportunities for conversations, relationships, and policy change. Bertram Hays Davis, the great-great grandson of Confederate President Jefferson Davis, discusses removing the Confederate settlement from Mississippi's state flag, and I quote, "It shouldn't represent the population of the state of Mississippi because it doesn't represent everyone." Whatever we put in the town common to be common to all of us, I repeat, whatever we put in the town common to be common to all of us. The Confederate statue of the Tarboro Town Common was erected in nineteen oh four, when African-Americans were relegated to the status of second-class citizens and had no voice in public affairs. But tonight, people have an opportunity to hear, acknowledge, and take into consideration our pain and suffering, not as a separate group, but as part of one group, one town, one state, one nation, and one race, the human race. While I oppose keeping the Confederate statue in the Tarboro Town Common, I do not support the unlawful destruction or vandalism of said statue. While I do not believe that there is any such imminent threat, I do believe that we need to move forward to protect said statue from the chances of such acts in the future. So, in the interest of unity, healing, public safety, and for the protection of the monument in question, I make the following motion. I make a motion that we carefully and respectfully move the Confederate statue located in the Tarboro Town Common, once a more suitable location has been found, so it can still be honored by those who wish to do so, subject to the town council's final approval of the location, process, and cause, as determined by the town manager and his staff. That's my motion.
Motion has been made. Where are you, second? Motion has been seconded. Further discussion?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me?
Can I make an amendment? Amendment to the legislature?
Let me let him speak first, okay? Take, speak here. Take, I'm sorry.
I think that it would be in the town's best interest to have the North Carolina Historical Commission look into our monuments on the commons. That is what the state tasks with, looking at monuments on state property, and I think it's easy, worth them to look at. I'd like to have a board meeting in each board so that everybody can voice their opinions and be heard. And I would also like our town attorney, Chad Enton, to oversee that everything is followed in due process. Chair?
Heard a lot of comments tonight, I appreciate it. Well, the fellow councilmen just read and some information shared here tonight. I'm a grandson of a great, great, great-grandfather that fought in the Civil War. His grave is not, you talked about it. His grave is not terribly far from here, over on Mount Pleasant, not Mount Pleasant, but Pleasant Hill Road in the Moore Family Cemetery. So I have a stake in that monument that's there. But also, I've heard a lot of things tonight, both sides of this issue. One gentleman asked, why a man? Well, any of us have paid attention to the local or most recent history in our country with the things that are going on, and, you know, some months back, the event that happened, where a man was killed by a policeman, and I don't know all the, I don't know all the ins and outs of that situation, and I'm not, I'm not here to talk specifically about that. I'm just saying, that was a moment in time that our history changed. And I think we do have to take a hard look at ourselves. I appreciate these young people that talked tonight, Ms. Rutherford and Ms. Dickens, particularly Ms. Dickens and the things that she brought, brought out in her, in her comment. And I can tell you that I have three children that basically feel the same way, and they're white. They realize that we have something that maybe it's okay with us as white people. We go by that monument day in and day out, and we don't think it bothers anybody. But I think we have found that it, it does bother a segment of our population here in Tarboro, and quite frankly, the majority of our population here in Tarboro. So in addition to what my fellow councilperson has asked me, or what, what I would like to see put in addition to that motion would be, because I heard a couple of people say it tonight, and I've had this brought to my attention before tonight, and that was, let the, let the taxpayers of Tarboro make a decision. We do need to look at what the cost is. We're, we're not a rich town, we're not a, they are off-town financially. I think we've done very well with the leadership of our town manager, this one, and the past town manager. We, we manage our budget very well. But if, if the staff is going to look at some things like cost, the possibility of where this monument may go if it was moved, and we haven't voted on that, and that's, that's not in the vote of, at this moment, but it's, can the Edgcombe County Board of Elections, do they have time to put this on the ballot? And we're talking about it in November, so my other question is, would the black leaders in our community, some of the people that are on this board, would they support giving it to November, to have it as part of the election process? And let the, let the majority, as I've heard both black and whites say in here tonight, let the majority decide, should this monument be moved? And I'll say that again, too, with, it should be, whether it should be moved, not torn down. I don't want this statue torn down. And I also don't want the outside influences that have been in other cities. And we can say we haven't had that here, and praise God, we haven't, but we will. I think if we don't do something about it ourselves, and somebody said something, and it's been mentioned several times, about Tarboro's famous for this and famous for that, let's be famous for doing something, before we're made to do something. Again, I don't want to see the statue come down. I really don't. I got a grandfather that fought in the war. But when I give consideration to what other people, and I would say again, the majority of the people in this town, and I try to look at it from that point of view, and as I've heard in here tonight several different times, do the right thing, then I, again, I, I, I think we have to give consideration to it, not just absolutely say we're not going to do that. So again, with what Mr. Woodard has offered, I would like to suggest adding to that, that the Board of Elections be looked to determine if they can put it on the ballot and see if there is an opportunity to have it in the November election, that's not that far away. And again, hopefully urge all black leaders, not only in the town of Tarboro, but in the county and the state, to support that decision, that we would leave it up to our general population to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that was a suggestion to add to his motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, I think that none of our, our most acts, I don't think, in addition to it, if I may, I was going to yield to, I know everybody speaks, and I'll come up, okay? Go ahead.
Yeah, I appreciate everything you said, I respect everything, you know, that you said, and, you know, I enjoyed, I enjoyed the democracy at work, and this is the way our system is supposed to work. You know, everyone has a voice, everyone has a say in the process, and, you know, it's, a lot of these stories are very touching. I have talked to Mr. Williams twenty-two, and he related, you know, to me a lot of his things that he went through as a child, and, or as a young person. I, I would never experience those type of situations because I wasn't born that way. So I, I can only sympathize with the stories that are told. You know, I, I wasn't born that way, so I, I don't know. You know, I can only listen and learn and hear from what people say, that I can respect people better, I can respect where they come from and the, the things that they've had to overcome that I haven't had to, you know, in their life. You know, there are times, there were times when it was very hard. Even though slavery gave freedom, there was a lot that did not come with freedom. They weren't able to vote, you know, they weren't able to go in restaurants, huge bathrooms. There were just numerous of things that freedom, it wasn't, it wasn't given to them at that time. They had to earn these things through other protests and through other activities, and we've come a long way. I talked to two young African-American gentlemen today about the statues. They were probably in their twenties, late twenties, twenty-eight, twenty-nine. They really were in favor of taking them down. They felt like that was a part of history, bad history, but it was history all the same. They felt like those statues really never played a role in who they all named, that their vision wasn't about looking back, but it was about looking forward. And I was very impressed.
And I was very impressed with these answers. During my time out and about, I would just generally just speak to someone, stop and ask them. And a lot of times, they were very appreciative of that idea, you know, because it is very nice to involve people. I would like to ask my fellow councilman if he would take this vote to a later date. I would still love to do some additional canvassing in my area and talk to some other people that I feel that I hold, you know, that their opinion is very valuable to me. And I would like to have them, and get their comments in this process, because I do not feel like, even though we've had a lot of people speak tonight, we haven't incorporated enough people, to me and even in the African-American community, to get a real consensus of what's going on. You know, and I feel confident that this board will come at some point and make a decision based on the community and the input from the community. But that's, that's my asking, is that you actually just take it to a little way to take, till we can do it some other time.
Before I consider that, let me ask something else. Part of the, part of the issue that really concerns me is that people really don't have a good idea of what the truth is. When they talk about this history, they really don't know what they're talking about. I mean, I'm, I'm being honest about it. I hear people say the Civil War was about states' rights. Yeah, it was about states' rights to preserve slavery. And yet, the cause, and I'll say this, this is real history. The United Brothers of the Confederacy, they were the ones that was wrong with a lot of these statues going all over the United States, particularly in the South. And one of the things they were doing was trying to make sure that the ideas of the Confederacy were kept alive. It was part of white supremacy. And they even praised the KKK, and even in our textbooks now. They reject any textbook that simply says it was about slavery. And also, people need to understand, and I appreciate the young man who speaks, because he knows the history. It was about this period of time that this statue, along with other statues, went and turned essentially. It was right out of Percy Ferguson, eighteen ninety, when they said several equals was okay. And this KKK came about. These statues were not just, they were not just memorials. They were statements of white supremacy and in forms of intimidation. And they were also saying that black people don't count. And that initially civil rights and those kind of things were attempted by the Republican Party. Now, the Republican Party was a party of Lincoln during that time. But they became violent, and attacked, not just blacks, but whites, KKK raiding, and all. And this is what, we're taking it out of context by just saying it's just history. But it was more than history. These statues were a statement. And, and, and also, all that's so like to mark his, mark his territory. And just think about this, and then, I mean, think about this. Why so many if they were just about history? Why so many? They were put in so many different places to make a statement, to say this town, to me, is saying this town is a Confederate town. And that's what I feel like, what, what the statement was. And what I'm saying is that we're at a point now, it's here, I didn't ask for this by, but it's here, and we have to look at it. But we have to look at the truth though. Are we going to say again, we're going to make that statement that this is a Confederate town? Are we going to say, okay, are we going to say that this statue can be moved somewhere where people want, want to honor them and honor them? I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't have a problem with people honoring their history or whatever. But if your history offends me, if your history offends my ancestor, if your history, then, what, what, why, why, why is necessary? Why, why should we have to do that a hundred and something years from now? And I think that, I was going to ask the councilman, and I'll ask, how many of y'all served in the Civil War? Okay, now, I thought so, none, you're all right. But Robert E. Meade, and he said it was the wrong thing to do then. And I'm saying it was the wrong thing there, and it's the wrong thing that I have to continue to, these statues go. If we don't do it, the next generation may come back and, and why don't we do this now? And not put it on our children, our grandchildren to do it. This is going to keep coming up. This is not going to stop. Two people come and live with the fact that this was something that we need to move, move back. In, 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 after Nazi Germany, they banned all this stuff from Hitler and all that kind of stuff. And they, it took a while to heal, and no, it's not going to heal people right away. It may be a wound for some, but it's a point where we can heal past this. And that's why I feel like this is something that we got to address, and we can do something about this. Moving that statue is not going to move into vast history. So let's get past that. I think that's not going to change history, no. Keeping it there is not going to change history, but moving is not going to change either. And I'm saying, let's, let's try to get past it. Let's try to rise above, how I'm going to say. I, I'll be honest with you. I don't have any problem yielding to that as one to bring it up to the next council meeting. I really don't have a problem. If you feel like, if you give a way of putting on a team, if you feel, feel like that. But I am going to make the same motion the next time, because. And, and, and remember, the motion is to move the statue, but it also includes making sure that it's done the right way, proper location, where people are still armed, and we know too, that we could, be aware of the process and the cost. And so I have no, but I will make the same motion, because I think we are in forefront of something we need to do.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. I am a part of a, I'm going to say she grew up on a state plantation here. I have great-grandmother, Liz Harris, and she was my babysitter. I could have been raised to be hate, to learn hate, but she didn't teach me hate. She taught me to be respectful, and most I respect myself, respect everybody. Many, many stories I can tell you that she told me, and is the reason I have the principles and the ideas I have today. As most of you are in here, if you're not black, you're white. It doesn't mean your heart, your heart is any different from mine. And some of you are incorrect. I have gotten calls from New York, Florida, Chicago, Ohio, South Carolina, and a lot of other conversations. There are people moving from state to state, some of them are outsiders coming into North Carolina, doing the things that they're doing. I would prefer that we consider putting it in a proper place so it does not get torn down. I don't want your, your history destroyed or whatever, but I don't want to be reminded of it either all the time. Or, and I definitely don't want the people that are moving state to state to tear down. So that's my concern. I do not want the looting and the, the, the stuff that comes with protesting here in our town. We do have a peaceful town. And I love my Tarboro police officers, every one of them. And I do not want what has happened in the other cities to come here. But if we don't make the best decision, it's going to come here. And I believe the people that call, they're going to come here. So, not that I'm calling out them, but they voiced their opinion to me, and they know who's organizing different places. It's like, you know, people just run for campaigns right now. They have people that, they have organizers. And if anybody wants to ignore what's really, really going on, then you do that. But I for one, enjoy the peace that I have here in my town. I do not want downtown or anything, I don't want the statue torn down and destroyed. I don't want any merchant in our town to be affected by those who want it down. So to sit here and think it's not going to happen here, I can't say it's going to happen here, but people are organizing, and they know it's there. They have done their research, just like most of you have done research, and know where they're located. That's how, that's why there are different places tearing it down. We don't want that here in Tarboro. So, I, I think we're going to make the best decision. I, I appreciate the support of each and every one of you that are here and everything that you said. And I just, you know, wanted to put it out there. So don't think that we, we're going to miss the mark, because they have them all mapped out. So let's do the best that we can do here. You know, and you cannot erase history. And we can't erase hate and white supremacy and any other, other stuff. It's what's in your heart. I am a born and again, a Bible-believing Christian, and I'm a diehard. And, and, and so, but I don't want to be caught up in that sort of thing. So, just, you know, please research your heart to hate. I don't want that here. We don't want that here. And just those who, you know, know that you became erased history, it's what's in your heart. So if you've got hatred and balance and all that in your heart, then that's your business. You all are going to have to deal with that on Judgment Day. I know what I'm going to tell Jesus. And I pray that he let me in, because I'm not going to miss truth. I don't get that, not one day in my life do miss truth of, he, uh, mean to anyone. As a matter of fact, my profession, I, I'm the mother autistic child, he has this, you know, and, and he is the one that spirited me to go in a different direction, because I was in banking and finance. When I, in Edgerton Community College, received my degree in business administration and accounting. But the spirit just kept leading me to help, help somebody. And it doesn't matter what color, creed, or race you are, or what, if I can help you over here, and especially those special needs people. And that's, and so, with that said, I can, you know, reason with a lot of feelings that you all, you all, but we also, as black people, have our feelings too about a lot of things. And we do have peace here, and I want to remain here. And so, so I'm supporting whatever that we can do in a manner that, um, that doesn't disrespect any of you that believe that should stay there. But don't think that trouble won't come here, or it's not going to come here. I just want to put it out there, so.
Thank you. I'm going to jump in here, so I can give a, how about to give my opinion to this. I'm against the removal of the statue. But I'm dedicated to finding a way to use the statue as an educational tool to acknowledge the memory of those who died, and not to use it as a celebration of what the South fought for. Remember, the war between the states was fought for states' rights. States' rights that were largely based on the right to own another human being. Can I, we explain this by placing an educating-type plaque on the memorial, explaining that this is not a memorial to the cause of the revolution, but to those who died. That is not changing history, but acknowledging it. Councilman Beath?
I think that this has stirred up an awful lot of emotion from all sides. I think we all know generally what direction that this is going. What concerns me the most is this was put on the agenda last Thursday, and we're here talking about it tonight. You know, I think that in that haste, nothing can be made but an easier decision. I think that we need to hear from all of our constituents. I firmly believe that. I think that we need somebody to come look and see if any of this has got any significance. It may well not. And I also think that we need as good guidance as we can from our, our legal counsel. You know, it, it seems like a simple decision, you know, let's tear this thing down. But it's not that simple. There are repercussions to it. And, you know, we need, we need to face it. And I firmly think that nothing's going to happen, nothing productive will happen if we sit here tonight and we vote to take that statue down. We need to instigate conversation amongst everybody. We need to do that. Until we can sit here as a people, have disagreements, and talk to our neighbors about something this divisive, we've got to be able to talk to each other. We've got to have a public forum. You know, if we sit here and vote tonight and take it down, then, you know, great, we don't have to worry about this anymore. But that's just going to harden the hearts on both sides. You know, and I think that we need to have public discussion. I firmly believe that. I can't state that enough. If I could, perhaps tonight's not the right night to make a motion, but I still say that I think we need to have a ward meeting in each ward, which the member of the council for that ward is part of, where everybody can come talk, because we need to talk. I think that we need to have somebody from the outside look into this. I think the North Carolina Historical Commission is a good place to start. There might be more places, but, you know, that's what our family, the state uses, and I think that's a good place to start. See if anything about this is significant. And then finally, you know, we need Mr. Hinton to lead all this up and make sure that we're doing this in accordance to the law. And I'm not making that motion tonight, but that's the motion that I'll make at the next meeting. I think we need time to talk about this. We all need to talk.
You're going to make it next week, I'm thinking.
Councilman Brown?
Go ahead. Yeah, uh, the reason I was asking pretty much is I do like to go to my ward. I do like to inform them of, I pulled this thing up, I really did, and as much time as I needed to get, and do food, and canvass fire, and talk to people, let people know what's going on. Get their input of it, because you also feel like I'm just a representative of their boards, that's all I am.
I have no problem with that.
And let you know, I, you know, I don't know the history of my family. I don't know whether we were in the South or the North, or if we were even in the country at that time. So, you know, I don't know how far back my goods, but I also know this, you know, this monument means something to this particular groups, historical group, and it means something indifferent to the African-American community. And even amongst the African-American community, it kind of, there's a few differences between opinions. Yeah, with the white community, you know, there's, there's difference between that. So it, it's kind of a mixture of a lot of different opinions. And that, that's the only reason why I was really asking.
I'm okay, I'm okay with that.
To, to research. But I want to tell you, this, this whole thing of, of, this monument, I've learned more about history and the monuments and everything that I probably have ever known in my life, but.
Uh, what, what is that? Okay, we got some people who are in state. So, yes, one of the people is here, you, the councilman?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, sir. I'd like to say that there's been a very good discussion tonight about people, it's both, both the whole and against it. I feel that on my ward, there's not been enough. Well, no, okay. Hello. I know that in my ward, I would like to talk to all the people that are in that ward, or have a chance for them to speak to me. I feel that a decision made tonight is not just for the people who elected, all of us, all eight of us. And I request that Mr. Mayor's motion to delay this be honored. Thank you.
Uh, council, uh, Councilman Burnett?
All right, here we go. All right, I would like to know exactly what is, uh, Councilman, your, your motion. Your, exactly what you're asking for, and then what Mr. Mayor wanted, or Mr. Brown wanted.
Okay.
We got, have a start track there.
Okay. My motion was to, to, uh, to recap and respect for this move, the Confederate statue located in the Tarboro Town Council. Once a more suitable location has been found, we'll still be honored by those who wish to do so. Subject to the town council's approval, final approval of the location, process, and cost as determined by the town manager and his staff. Subsequently, uh, several councilmembers asked for delay. Councilman Brown asked for, because he wanted to.
Councilman Brown asked for, because he wanted to discuss more with people in this ward. So, and I have no problem with drawing my motion, so that we can do that.
So you're saying that you agree with it?
Yes, I'm agreeing with you that. But I did say that I would make the same motion the next time. And I hope that we can move forward with this process. But, you know, that's where we are with it.
Okay, and, thank you.
Okay.
You're withdrawing your motion. It was previous.
Postpone it, postpone my motion. Until further discussion, because some people ask for that. If you feel like you're not discussing it enough, I have no problem with that. And as a matter of fact, I suspect that might would happen, but I made my motion. Yeah, with motion still standing, still postponed. From further discussion.
Excuse me, from a staff standpoint, I guess, as far as I'm directed from a staff standpoint, isn't that you want us to, do we need to research cost or anything in the twenty years?
Yeah, I think so.
I just wanna make sure that we have it, or is it totally taken?
I agree, I think that would be appropriate going on forward with that. I mean, I don't know whether how people are gonna vote. Some people, you know, change their mind, whatever, I don't know how people are gonna go. What situation is going to be, yes, that would be good.
We'll try to find that discussion in the next meeting.
Also, I'm buying it.
Okay, yes, I agree with Mr. Mayo about allowing enough time for him to speak with his constituents. Meanwhile, however.
I don't think it fits.
My phone and my email has been going up all day, a lot, last week, about everything. And I have spoken with a lot of citizens. And most of them, and they're very diverse, mainly whites, who agree that it's the right thing to do is to remove the statue and make sure that it's put in a safe place, somewhere that people can come out and visit it. And of course, history cannot be erased by no means. To anyone to feel that it can, it cannot. History lies within me and everyone in the room. We do have to talk about the cost. We do understand that. I've been asked that question too, and those are things we have to sit down and discuss. But just removing overnight, I knew that wouldn't happen tonight, but I do know that some people have not talked with their representative. I had people call me who hadn't spoken with. Now, I talk too much. I had people calling me from every ward. And I'm saying, you know, but I still answer to them. You know, that's just the right thing to do. But I think that this is the right time in this time to remove it. It means what it means. We know what it means. And it's just the right thing to do. And Ms. Dickens, I appreciate what you had to offer tonight. It just nutshell everything and to pretend it doesn't. It's not real, it's real. And for so many, so many years, I've looked past that statue, but I knew very well what it meant to me and my ancestors. And if you're not me, if you're not black, you must go on and say what's real, call the elephant the elephant. If you're not, you don't understand. You just don't understand. So we can preserve that history, move it into a place. Hopefully, I wish we could get it in the Veterans Museum, take man off the steps, dog off the pedestal, bring him down, put him in a place where he can visit. That make everybody be satisfied. Then everybody who opposes it being removed will have the opportunity to visit it whenever they feel. And I can even take my kids to visit, grandkids to visit, because we'll all have that but to slam in the face for so long. And to continue doing so, I think is just, it's not the right thing to do. It's just not. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would not say that we can't honor the history. But it doesn't have to be at the Town Common where everything, I think we can start a new history where we put something that speaks to all of us and not is the only one experience. I feel like, uh, you know, it's easy to, we're still, we're not minority council, right? So we can be, I voted, for example, or a lot of times, people who, yeah, more white people are not more, more vocal. And a lot of times, black people don't live in this statue because it is painful. But it don't mean that if they dug down deep like I have, you start looking into the history. I think, as Robert was saying, you start, you do start feeling that you do realize what's going on. And that's what bothers me is that I think people are talking about history, but they're not talking about the people that actually represented intimidating and violating people's rights, freedom, and this kind of thing. Is that what we're gonna stand for? That's the world saying. When the history is not gone anywhere, just because of statues. And nobody's talking about the story. So that's a fallacy of argument, what I see. It's not a good move. It don't mean that the history is gone. So you're right, can't destroy history. The history is still there, and the pain is still there. And I hope that you all hear, hear us, recognize that we can get past this. That's all I say. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Just go back again and ask me if the staff is gonna be researching. Can we research to see if it can be put on the November ballot? If that's part of the motion, we'll look at that.
I'm kind of opposed to that. I just think that suppose you get fifty-one to fifty, or forty-nine or somebody, and you still got to do it. I just think that, uh, I think the council.
I'm only asking for it to be researched, I didn't say, yes. I'm just saying, could it, is it possible?
I just, you know, like, some people don't vote. I just think.
Oh, I know people don't vote.
I think the council, you know, when you are with it, go back and do what we're talking about. A lot of people need to come back and make the vote. I think it's time for us to kind of.
Well, let me think of it this way, Mr. Root. As a council member, I'm asking that if it comes down to voting election, do we ask to be put on the ballot?
Okay.
That's the question I'm asking.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Don't you ask for people to put on the ballot?
No, I'm just asking, I'm asking the staff, when they do their research of the things that you requested, call the county board of elections and say, is it time? Is it time enough for it to be able to be put on the ballot for the November election? This particular item?
Okay.
I'm just not saying it'll pass, not saying anybody else would vote for it. We heard this suggestion from several citizens. All I'm asking is, is there time to do that? And then make them back and say, no, ballots are already, ballots have already been driven.
Okay.
And then if they say yes, well, that's I think.
Then we'll discuss it. Is that possible to, we want to pursue it? Because in the meantime, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mayo, and I'll offer, we'll schedule some time in this very meaningful ward too, if anyone wants to come. But we may, we may determine that that's something that we do want to do. Or we may decide we don't. All I'm asking is, is it possible?
Well, we still have the final code nineteen restrictions, so that's why I'm sure we, African American, black people, not even get it on the cards.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
So you have, so some of your votes, and is there? Hold on, hold on. Was this what?
I love my, I love my place to say the same thing here. About the time to put it on. And this is a very tense subject right now, and with everything going on. I think citizens of Tarver should make the vote. It's bad as too. And like I said, this old young lady explained to me about a day, and said, you know, you have one vote. I said, yes, ma'am. But you represent us, you don't represent yourself. And now you need to vote the way we want you to vote. And I totally agree with her on that. That's how this country was founded, which are the rules. And it's not how I feel about the situation, it's how the citizens in Ward Three feel about it. And of course, across town too. Unlike you, people call me a malware. I found a couple phone calls, so I could go to sleep. I mean, really. And then opened it up this morning, and I thought you would never stop voting. But anyway, I was gonna do the same thing you're asking. And I just, making sure what we're doing is legal. We just can't just say, take it down. We don't really know, we own it. That's another question I may ask. I don't know if we own it.
I have to know.
Man?
If we can find out we own it.
That's why, that's why I'm trying to get it.
Now, I have asked that question, and I'm pretty sure that Town of Tarver owns it. Owns it, no question.
I thought Edgewood County was involved with it this time.
Yeah, well, the town attorney has researched this some, and he can shed some light on it maybe. But, you know, some questions for when it was dedicated, it was dedicated to Edgewood County. But it's been on town property for a hundred plus years. So I just wanna think about that.
At this time, there is no.
I just wanted to add that, you know, I think that we need to talk as a town. And I think we need to have board meetings and get folks talking in our neighborhoods. And, you know, this question of ownership, you know, any history behind that, let's figure that out before we make a vote on this. That's why I recommend the North Carolina Historical Commission. You know, if the state tasks them with looking at their monuments, let's let them look at ours.
So what exactly are you asking them now?
I'd like for them to look at, you know, if there's any historical, what's the significance behind these monuments? And where they do the research on this, let's let them do the research and see what they come up with.
Okay. I think we have, you can go ahead and get that research done for us. Is that not correct?
I will, absolutely, if that's what you want. So at this point, it's just, so I'm clear. Staff on board, we want to check on a referendum for the November ballot. We wanna check on, I guess, discuss with the North Carolina Historical Commission about the statue, just history of the statue, relevance of the statue, I guess. And we are also looking at cost involved in moving the statue.
And a potential location that it could hang move, if we so voted to do so.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, sir. I would like to know, okay, thank you. What action is this council charged with tonight? We've had a closed motion withdrawn of Pedro McBurney. Got Mr. Mayo with one, got CBO with one. But you had like.
I just ask.
Add it to it. I'm sorry, but I'd like to know what to vote, if we're gonna vote right now, what are we voting for?
No, we're not voting. There is no motion there.
At this point, the staff's been directed to research some items. And that's it.
All the other council members want to meet with their constituents.
Are there any other motions?
Look, not. I'm looking for one.
I got one final comment. I think it's fine, I'm not sure. Now this subject has been brought up, I'll just say how I feel. I get the feeling, and this is how I feel, if we don't move the statue and make a long period of wait, I feel like we have rededicated in this time. Now, this statue was put in in nineteen oh four. I can, I can understand, I don't have any problem, because I know what the situation was. But this is two thousand twenty. And I was hoping that we would be moved past that, and we wouldn't impose somebody's history that violates another person's history on them, when we can come up with another solution that helps everybody. And that's what, man, it really, it really hurts. I don't think y'all understand me. I just don't think you see it. It's more than just history to people. It's people's feelings, it's people understanding. And I think so, I never watched Bruce, because I couldn't stand to see all this carnage, this mistreatment, and all those things. I've never watched it. And it was on every day for a while. And some things I don't watch now. When this guy was, uh, this officer put his knee on somebody and stood there. You know, that's painful stuff. And I used to restrain kids. And I know that you don't have to do that. There is nobody can tell me, officer, anybody can tell me, when you got somebody handcuffed behind their back, and you got holding their leg, that they can do anything to you. I know this, but it's not, it can't happen. You got control of the things in the arm, you got the longines. But putting your knee on somebody's head, and so that's, that's where a lot of this is coming from, is that it's abuse and this thing. We know it's history, but we're just saying, let's respect other people's history as well. So we're not saying, I would be against destroying this. And I'm against removing the fountain. I'm against going y'all beyond this. But it was, I already said, this is a war monument. This is a war monument. And it just, it just means that, it means, it's a lot of pain, it's a lot of suffering. And once you get into it, once you get into it, I'm just saying, just take that consideration. You know, let's find a way, where we can still recognize this environment, but not at the expense of people whose families have suffered and continue to suffer. This is what my concern, and I'm too. Councilman Burnett?
Sure, I see towards that statement. That's, you know, I think that's the important thing, people to listen to other people and listen to what they're saying. And so I'm gonna tell you, I talk to a lot of people, and it gets amazing what you can learn from a person, especially an older person. If you, young people, talk to some older people and learn from them, they give you a lot of their history and things that they've gone through that's very valuable. And I love to hear people talk about their lives and the way things work, because you can learn so much. But I want to ask Ms. Fleming, how sure are you maybe that there is actually a time capsule under that monument?
I'm very sure. We've got the newspaper account from nineteen oh four that talks about, they actually put the cornerstone up in Memorial Day weekend of nineteen oh four. They did not complete the monument until November, dedicated in November. And that was the same weekend that they moved the Wilson Monument from the courthouse down to the common and put his grave there. So we have a list from the newspaper of what was in the time capsule and what is buried there.
Okay, is, if the capsule comes back and decides to relocate the monument somewhere else, are we gonna have to inform the state that this, we're doing this so they can come and?
Councilman Mayo's report or request to deal with the national, I mean, with the North Carolina Council, is important because that time capsule would need to be preserved. And we do not have the ability here to deal with that. That would have to go to the Department of Cultural Resources in Raleigh. They found one in the monument that they tore down or destroyed, moved, whatever you wanna say. They did to the tall one in Raleigh, because I think all three things happened about it. And part of it was destroyed, part of it was taken down. And they found a time capsule in the bottom. And you know there is a time capsule in this one.
Do you happen to know how many pieces that monument is in? I mean, when it was constructed? You say there was a base.
There was a base, and there's, I'm not sure exactly. I mean, I've looked at it, I've got pictures of it, but I can't tell you, you need to get a stone mason to look at it to determine how it would need to be disassembled. It's not just a matter of removing the statue. It's a big problem, as Rocky Mount found out, inexpensively.
That's it, thank you. Questions? Any other motions? Yes, sir. John?
I would like to make a motion that we discussed this with all our ones. We follow up with everything that's been asked by this council. And I'll close that motion by sending to adjournment.
Motion has been made to adjourn. Go here a second.
What about the other items we have on the agenda?
That's what I'm sorry about that. I'm kind of following, yeah.
Still trying, it's just...
Is there a second?
Uh, look, I, I want to say, I want to thank everybody for their opinion, I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just settling, there's a lot of feelings and emotions involved, and I understand that. I just try to, try to look over this way a little bit, when I say that I was just representing people that I know. It's, it's, it's rough, it's, it's, it's not easy. We're in green water, and it's just tight on this thing, and I mean, it's, it just tight on this thing. It'd be nice if we could find a place for everybody who wants to enjoy it as well. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. All right. Your end.
Okay. All right. Next item we have on the agenda tonight is the memo twenty dash thirty-nine related to the NEW Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'll, I'll follow.
We take a quick break.
Okay, uh, back to memo twenty dash thirty-nine, it's related to the, uh, NEW Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, the town of Tarboro is currently under the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty NEW...
We don't even have a form, dude.
You do it.
That's what I do. Okay, sorry.
If, if, yes, sir. If you couldn't tell by context, uh, NEW sent to Nash, Edgecombe, Wilson, uh, regional hazard mitigation plan. So a new plan for twenty twenty has been developed in coordination with Nash, Edgecombe, and Wilson Counties, and prepared by the consulting firm Wood, required by the state of North Carolina. In addition to updating the original plan for hazard mitigation, the adoption of this plan ensures that Tarboro is eligible for federal disaster funding. It is recommended that town council vote to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty NEW Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Motion to do so.
Okay. Motion has been made, and seconded for the discussion. All goes in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
All right. Memo twenty dash forty is related to an amendment to the fee schedule. Uh, the town of Tarboro adopted and updated Unified Developmental Orders at the June eighth, twenty twenty regular town council meeting. Certain changes to the UDO require new fees that were not included in the existing town of Tarboro fee schedule. Therefore, it's necessary for council to adopt the attached changes to the twenty twenty one fee schedule regarding specific temporary uses. It's recommended that council would vote to approve the amendment to the fee schedule.
Move, second. For the discussion, hold on, this is for the level few units?
Yes, that's part, yes, sir. Uh, temporary uses included, uh, will be from a few few units as well as other temporary uses that require multi-power number of use.
Mr. Brown might would ask a question on this particular... Just say that, because it was out of the running.
I'd, uh, I recommend that council adopt the attached amendments to the fee schedule.
And if we, who did second, so we'll try.
Don't believe we've got a motion.
Do I hear a motion?
We have a motion, I second, so we're having further discussion.
Further discussion. All goes in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, motion is carried.
Okay. Uh, memo twenty dash forty-one is related to a resolution for the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, Region Four Law Enforcement Liaison. The Tarboro Police Department has completed an application contract with the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program to receive funding in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars during fiscal year twenty twenty one. Uh, this grant is funded at a hundred percent with no matching funds required from the town. The grant application is dedicated to traffic safety initiatives, initiatives, and is based upon chief web service and commitment to the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program as a law enforcement liaison for this region, Region Four. Uh, the allocated funds have been designated for the replacement of mobile data terminals, a speed display sign, and new car camera system. It's recommended that council approve the attached resolution in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars and authorize staff to execute all documents pertaining to that.
So move?
Yeah.
Move, second, for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried.
That's all the items I have, we just made.
Okay. Um, time for...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say, sitting here and participating in any conversation tonight, I was highly impressed by the conduct of this council and the citizens of this town. I think we have a wonderful community, and I hope to build on that going forward. I'd just like to commend you all for the conduct in tonight's meeting. And I don't have any other report. The summer municipal attorneys conference is coming up in August, the plan to attend, it's going to be a Zoom online meeting. I'm not going to beach this year. I'd like to know if there's any developments in the law that...
Okay. Council members, CB Brainerd?
Uh, I'd just like to, uh, recognize that file work is...
Yeah, we apologize, as far as the mics go, it's more for the people on the Zoom call. We don't talk directly to the mics that can't hear them.
Uh, good night, file work this way went off very well. I guess we had some pictures and things, it looked real pretty, they were nice. I liked the, uh, the, uh, pictures that were put on the internet from the, uh, you know, aerial views. I was very interested to watch that with the sound and everything, that was great. And, uh, you know, I think this meeting went very well, and I just, it's a great time to be able to see people come together and, and be able to get out of the room and speak their opinions, you know, in a very orderly. Uh, nothing got out of hand, and I tell you, I respect that a lot from our citizens, and, and very grateful for what they've done, and everyone that's come out. Uh, and, and, you know, I'd say I'm proud of this capsule. I think they listened very well, and they listened to what our citizens had to say. That's all I can say. Thank you.
Councilman Burnett?
Well... Mr. Brown took all my thumbs, so, yeah, I agree with what he said.
Councilwoman Bannister?
Nothing at this time.
Councilman Jenkins?
I'd like to thank the staff and the council for today. It went well, and I'm, go ahead, everybody's tapping, or speaking. Nobody shot anybody.
Uh, Councilwoman Jordan?
Yes, um, I think the meeting went well, and, um, hopefully, everyone always searched themselves, got searched themselves first. Um, it, it, it's, it's nothing against anybody in particular, but what's wrong is right, what's wrong is wrong. Um, and of course, I, I would like to thank, um, Tarboro pretty to always come when I call. I just need, I need one thing. Don't go in here now, hold it. They know. I just need to lower this thing down a little. But I can't keep living like that, it's, it's, you know, when people be in a... I know, and that's my record, because I keep texting you, that's the, and I, I'm gonna tell them, fuck. Uh, that's my record. I text not on you, but she did not call. It's not an emergency, what they're doing. And so with the go-karts and all that stuff, and those bikes, I don't know where they came from, but, you know, you see somebody riding down the street with a go-kart with a baby in the lap, that's just tear my nerves up. And so, I just need them gone.
Keep calling.
Oh, keep calling. Oh, keep calling.
Councilman Mayor?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out and had an honest and sincere conversation tonight. Uh, I'd like to see this instigate more conversation in our community. We need to have difficult conversations. I will never understand what it's like to walk in another man's shoes. And we all need to realize that we don't know what each other see. Uh, but if nothing else is learned from this, let's move forward, and let's talk to each other, uh, even when the talk is hard. And let's not be afraid to reach out to the folks that think differently than us. Uh, I will say no more.
Councilman Taker?
Well, thank you, it's a good meeting, uh, over this morning, because I was thinking we might go to midnight tonight. I was, uh, under the impression we would have a lot of people here, and we did.
Just talk faster.
But, uh, I, I think it was great that people were able to get up and speak tonight. Uh, I did one of the quotes, do the right thing. For many years, I taught class to a lot of young people in road management class, talking about do the right thing, do your best, and treat other people the way you want to be treated. And I think we have to respect the opinions of all people. And certainly, if something is offensive to another individual, we have to do the right thing. And I think, uh, in the long run, we know what that's going to be. But, uh, again, good meeting, I'm proud of Tarboro. I think Tarboro is, uh, can be, I think we can be a shining star, uh, as we move forward in the next few years. Uh, thankful for young people, thankful for young people. Uh, sometimes people like me that are seventy years old, think we, because we've lived through life, we, we know a lot more than other people. But these young people, I mentioned my children, they see things through a different set of glasses, or eyes, or whatever, and dagged on it sometime, I think, they're, they're right. Age don't always get it, but, uh, thankful for the whole group that was here tonight, and, and thankful for this, uh, council that we work together as we do. Thank you.
Councilman Wood?
I too want to thank everyone for expressing themselves very well tonight, and I thought everything was conducted very well. Uh, you know, I have no problem with people having different views in this council, I have this knowledge. So hey, do our best to understand each other's pain, other's other's feelings, try to move forward. I do think we have a good town, and we do have a good council, like, you know, uh, this council. Uh, this is a different council than we had before. And, uh, and I think it just takes courage to speak up, and we all need to try to understand each other. But I think the presentation went real well.
Um, okay, uh, we now need to go into closed session. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to move to closed session.
Yeah.
Motion has been made, moved into session, discussion. All those in favor, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you leave it to the...